Good afternoon, welcome to an unusually timed Board of Selectments meeting. My name is Jim Lehan, to my right is Jeff Palumbo, to my, Mr. Palumbo's right is our, Mr. Scott Bragdon, to, I'm gonna skip over you for one moment, to, why am I having a hard time with the people here? Mr. Jack Hathaway, Town Administrator, and Sue Jacobson, Executive Assistant. And then to my left is our newest member of our Board of Selectment, which we really want to officially welcome to your first formal meeting, Mr. Kevin Calcutt. So, would you please join me in standing for Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will remind everyone, this meeting is being both audio and visually taped, and can be available through NCTV. Kevin, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. I thought we had a team height on this board, but that's obviously gone down the tubes.
Somebody's bringing down the average.
Touche, touche. Mr. Hathaway, would you please read the agenda, sir?
We'd be happy to. We have an application from Novatos for a corporate name and change of the legal structure regarding their liquor license. We have Mr. McGee to talk about roads, Mr. Bragdon to talk about the insurance reimbursement policy. We have a number of warrants to approve, and then a number of action items, including certification of signatures, appointment to the registrar, to the Board of Registars, covenant for Norway Farms, and a request for the YMCA to have their triathlon in town, partway in town, a request from the garden club, and application for appointment for the associate member of the planning board, and then discussion, may we take this one out of order, but a discussion regarding setting the annual water emergency. We can talk about that with Mr. McGee, discussion of FY 2019 goals, and setting of the future meeting dates. We do have an executive session for, to give you an update on the Clerical Union and DPW Union contract negotiations.
Thank you very much. Is it Jennifer, is that correct? Please join us.
Sorry.
Come on up and join us.
Right here.
Sure. I think everyone has read, hopefully, everything. Just tell us a little bit more for the folks at home about why you're here.
Okay, we were an LLC, and our accountant advised us to become a corporation, so I'm here to ask permission to be a corporation for the liquor license.
Questions from anyone? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That was really hard.
Told you, Jen.
The buildup was awful.
Such anxiety. Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
She's been here since 12 o'clock.
Thank you very much.
Hope you have continued success, so things keep going well for you.
Yeah, good luck.
Bob, can we just, maybe we can get Mr. Bragdon to go next, because you're gonna, we're gonna beat you up, so to speak, in a nice way.
Only in the nicest ways.
Of course, of course.
I didn't know there was a nice way to beat somebody up.
Well, we're not gonna beat him up then, 'cause it has to be nice.
So I have, I wanna talk about a policy, then updating it, and then a brief mention of the Old Town Hall. So, just as sort of a background, brief background for your sake, Kevin, with the advent of the Affordable Healthcare Act, we, and pretty much everybody else, were seeing huge increases in our insurance rates, anywhere from 8.9% to almost 15% a year. And it got to a point where it was really not sustainable for town and for the people in town to pay, to pay. We went from, I think, what, the fourth or fifth largest expense, Jack, to the second or third largest expense in the town, third. So, it was, it was a problem. Now, under state law, any changes to healthcare benefits are negotiable with the unions. Back about seven years ago, they passed a law in Massachusetts that, for the first time, allowed us a path to negotiate changes to the plans, 'cause everybody was facing the same problems. Basically, what it does is it allows the town to go to the GIC, which is a state insurance, they have a benchmark plan, so you could take it to that, that level of benefit, and whatever the savings are, you share 25% of that savings with the unions for the first year. So, there is a process to do that. We actually were able to negotiate, we offered them some additional things, some niceties. We've bumped up the amount, we were a little low on what we paid, we were only paying 62%. Now we're paying 65% for the next year. And so we made, you know, some changes that were helpful to them along that line, but they also got some increased copays and other things that increased their costs. But, the results have changed behaviors, so we get a, last year's increase was very reasonable, I think it was almost nothing, and this year was 3.5%. So the changes in the behaviors and the plans have definitely made a difference in, in what the town is seeing for increases. As part of what we did initially was we, there is a inpatient hospital copay, there's a high-level hospital and a lower-level hospital, so that we offered to reimburse for those for the first couple of years, which we did. The amount of reimbursements were, were not a lot, frankly. In the first year, because we had to pay back that 25%, the balance of that fund, we refunded to the people in the insurance program. But, we've continued to do this, because again, the cost wasn't, wasn't great, and for those people that are having expenses, it's a, it's a, it's a help. I also work with Jack, and we are adding outpatient copays this year, which is a $250 hit, so say, for instance, a colonoscopy, any kind of outpatient procedure that you have costs $250. Some people have multiple ones a year. The expense is capped at $10,000. If the policy does allow us to come back to you and Jack if that runs out, I don't expect it to run out, so I don't think that's an issue, but it does allow, if that runs out, that we can come back and ask for more, or you can say no, or yay, or whatever. So this policy is just a procedure, and, and the approval for that. I've sort of, the other policy had specific end dates. This policy says it can be renewed every year, or you guys can say, "Stop," at the beginning of any fiscal year. So that's the way this reads. And then there's a procedure in here for, the payments for confidentiality, for reasons go directly to finance, so that they pay those, they look at the bill, and then they, they can pay, pay the amounts directly to the employee, plus any taxes that erode. So that's really what this is, this is just an update of the current policy, taking us forward, and again, you guys can, year by year, say, "Let's continue," or "Don't continue" based on the budgets, what's going on.
So the only two changes are, one, it is a rollover contract unless we so dictate otherwise.
It's a rollover policy unless you dictate, it's not a contract, it's a policy.
The policy is in place unless we choose not to execute.
Exactly, and you can cancel it at the beginning of any fiscal year.
And the only other change that we, you've added is the outpatient reimbursement.
That's correct.
Everything else is what we did before.
That's correct. I took out the dates, 'cause they had dates in there.
Okay.
But that's, that's, that's exactly what I did.
And did we, we came in under what we budgeted?
I think last year, we spent $1,500, $1,800.
So we were considerably under the cap.
Exactly. And I, again, I would be surprised if we spent the whole $10,000.
Oh, you never know.
You never know. I, I hope people don't add those expenses.
We hope, we hope we never did, because that means people are healthy.
Also, the outpatient stuff is preventative stuff, so.
Questions?
Just curious, yeah, just the GIC, the most recent information, 'cause each year that gets re-indexed in terms of the price of the GIC, how much did that go up year on year, do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, GIC is a mystery all its own. They came out back in February saying that they were eliminating all of their most popular plans, Fallon, Harvard, and Tufts, and everybody went nuts. They said they had to do it in order to keep costs down, so then the Attorney General got involved, they said, "Okay, we'll keep those," and then they came out with 0% to 2.5% to 3% increases, minor increase. So how they come up with that based on, on what they were saying is a, is a bit of a mystery, you know? Fortunately for them, they, if they spend too much money, the state just pays it, so the other, rest of the, the, the rest of us, you know, we fix that. But, they have made significant changes to their plans. First of all, their out-of-pocket maximum is 5,000, 10,000, ours is 2,500, 10, 2,505. Their copays, they've tiered their doctors, which ours, we, even their specialists are tiered, and their pharmaceuticals are much more expensive than ours, but the plans are slightly less expensive than ours.
Yeah, not dramatically.
Not dramatically.
We showed the prices there, we're not dramatically cheaper.
By the way, Kevin, that, we can, without union approval, we could go to the GIC if we wanted to. They, they're, they kinda scare me, frankly, 'cause they're all, first of all, they can change their plans whenever they want to, it doesn't have to be at the beginning of the year. Secondly, I have to agree to, I have to sign the contract in November, which is five or six months before I even know what their plans are. So, you know, it's a, it's a risky process.
Our plan is working.
Our plan is working, and it's Blue Cross, and so, I think, I think we're set, so. But that was a good question.
Questions?
No.
Okay, do you need us to approve this?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Just a couple minor grammatical issues in the second paragraph that I noticed, but we'll fix those. This policy may, you gotta, you gotta put "may be renewed."
Okay.
And then get rid of that "come" after July, between 1st.
Okay.
Allow us to fix any other grammatical issues if there are any.
Well, the "maybe" is, is a change, so let's, let's use friendly amendment to reflect that?
Sure, I would appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So I just briefly wanna mention, I'll be coming to the next meeting.
Yeah, you know, we're not on, we're not on the agenda.
I know, but I can just mention it, right?
Yeah.
I'm not gonna ask them to comment or anything.
It's a sensitive subject in the past, so it's just, that's fine, just give an update, but we're not gonna.
We're not, I'm not even gonna give an update, I'm just gonna mention that we're gonna, the Old, the Old Town Hall, in my mind, is a safety issue for the town, it's been broken into three times recently, and we don't, so we need, me and you, need to start thinking about what we're gonna do with that building. Do we tear it down? Do we, you know, formally board it up? But, we need to start thinking about what our plans are, I just wanna mention that. I'll be back at the next meeting to, we'll have the whole discussion.
We will discuss at the next meeting.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Scott.
Hope the move went well?
Yes.
Good, all settled?
Those things can do.
All settled?
Well, got 100, 150 boxes yet to go.
Then you're settled.
Yes, we're settled.
All right, take care.
Thank you.
Mr. McGee, how are you, Robert?
Good, thank you.
Oh, my God. Shoot.
Hey, Bob.
Well, Mr. McGee, it's time, huh?
So before we forget, the bottom item we have on our agenda item is please consider declaring a state of water emergency, our annual, our annual process that we're required to do through the DEP, just state that there's a water.
Restriction.
Water restriction, that's the word I'm looking for, thank you. So people are limited to 65 gallons per day, per person. We try to encourage people to conserve their water, so the DEP requires us to declare that it's a restriction.
Okay.
And we've done so each year.
Each year.
We have towns posted, different ends of the town, and just talking about watering and stuff, you see coming into town.
You put it in, with, with the invoices as well, right, with the bills?
Right, yeah. And then, you know, as the year goes on, and, you know, we go into droughts, and, you know, the sprinklers go on and things like that, then we get into a little bit more, you know, maybe a reverse 911, whatever we feel we need to do, depending on, you know, drought levels and things like that, water usage.
Okay. Do I have a motion to re-energize the water limitation, whatever the appropriate term is? Water emergency policy?
Motion to continue the water emergency policy is made.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Your honor, sir.
Well, you know, we met here not too long ago, and we discussed what roads, and I gave you an over, you know, a larger list than we could afford to pave, and I didn't bring that back with me. What happens is, you know, of course, we got 20 streets that would like to do some kind of remodeling, repaving, or something like that, we can only afford so much. So we go, I like to listen to what, what you guys have to say, and take that into consideration, we go out, take a good look at the streets a second time, come up with a list, and this is what I have, no different than the list that I gave you before, but more specifically, I think you helped with some of the decisions, and just by your comments and stuff like that. This is a project request for Chapter 90, it requires your signature.
Mm-hmm.
I pass this around, and on the back of it, what you're gonna see is a spreadsheet, I made it big enough where it's really clear. Maybe I could've, could've printed out a few more, but it goes along with this one here, it's highlighted, and this one has the same spreadsheet. So, what like, we'd like to do this year, I'll, I'll move this around so you can take a peek at it, and I'm just gonna repeat what you, what you can see in the back there is, we've chosen to do is, and kinda jumping the gun, because I've already have scheduled for Thursday to come in and start milling Myrtle Street. Myrtle Street's in great need of repaving, so we're going to mill and repave Myrtle Street from Main Street to Hanover, and although Han, and we'll turn down Hanover just till we get around to the point of curvature, and cut it short right there. Although Hanover could use a, you know, a reclamation-type process, um, there's like two houses on that street, and they probably would love a new street there, but it's basically a cut-through, depreciation would, isn't appreciated town-wide. So anyway, so it's Myrtle Street from Main Street to Hanover, and then there are sections of Myrtle Street where I'd like to go and pave the whole thing, there are sections of Myrtle Street that are in good shape, and just sections that have just fallen apart. So Jeff had mentioned before, can we go around and do some section patching, which in many towns is a, an actual program, so yes, the answer is to that. So on this request, you'll see Myrtle Street, but then you'll see that I, there's another 1,000 feet on Myrtle Street, which, I don't wanna bore you with from what address to what address, some are 100 feet, some are 200 feet, another 100 feet, another 500 feet. So we're gonna go from there all the way to the Millis Town Line and section patch Myrtle Street. When we're done with it, Myrtle Street will be ready for the day that we can overlay the whole thing. So basically, it's a, it's a street, if you were to close your eyes and drive down it when I'm done with it, you're gonna think it's beautiful, but you are gonna see the section patches, so it looks, it's gonna look a little bit checkerboard. And then with this project request, we're gonna take a left at the end of that on River Street. We had a gentleman here, if you remember the last meeting, and complained about River Street, he was 100% right. However, we cannot afford to do all of River Street, 'cause it's probably like 5,000 feet or something like that, so we're just gonna continue on Myrtle Street, down River Street, section patching our way through it. And that's the, pretty much the first project request for your signature.
You had talked about Merrill Lake.
About?
Merrill Lake, Merrill Lake.
What about it? Yeah.
Fixing it.
Couple of items, I don't remember even discussing that, did we?
Yeah.
Good.
I'm not sure if it was, I mean, you may have spoken.
Yeah, Merrill Lake's got two points, and I'll, just before you go on, Merrill Lake's got a dam that needs to be rebuilt badly.
Right.
And I was gonna kinda wait for that to get done before we paved Merrill Lake, because it is bending off and breaking, and it needs repair, but.
When, when will you get at that?
Who knows?
I know, I know, but I mean, the road is, the road is terrible, it's really, really, really bad.
Yeah.
And there's, you, there are several people up there that for years now have been asking for help there, and we've pushed it off, and pushed it off, and, you know, unfortunately, those folks didn't show up at a meeting, you know, like the gentleman did from River Road.
Yeah.
I went down and took a look at it, and that road is, I thought it was on the list.
Yeah.
I mean, is there anything we can do to help that road out, a little bit?
We can do what we're doing on Myrtle and River, and that is, remember, we've done this on a handful of streets that are still out there waiting for that top layer, but we did such a pretty good patch.
Right, but it buys us time.
That it buys us, it does buy us time, and, but we can do the same thing, we can go down and, and take that street apart until the foundation of that street's good, and it's ready for an overlay, and it's a smooth ride, and go on, it would, it's, it's something we can do, but I don't know if I can get to it this year with the money that we have, unless something happens in the spring, you give me, give us some money in the DPW, and we can go out in the fall, and, I said spring, I meant the fall. You know, do something through the October month, November, or something like that.
Can you work out a cost estimate about what that would be?
Already have, probably, but yes, the answer is definitely yes. Mine would be a little bit, oh, just gotta update the no-bid numbers.
You did do some, we, well, I know we did some work on Merrill Lake a couple years ago, right?
Yeah.
Top half of that.
Yeah, that was coming down the hill, and that was just the, there's like a three-way intersection there that was, it was flooding out a house, and that guy, those people there have been complaining about it, it just goes right over the driveway into their house, and it just, so, we fixed the drainage there, it was, I think it was a, I don't know if we spent $50,000 down there, Jack, I forget, but wasn't, wasn't a lot of money, but we fixed the drainage.
You know, Jim, it may be worth just explaining to folks how we got to where we are today. We had a selectmen's meeting probably about a month ago, where we looked at the funds that we have available, and we discussed with Bob the condition of the roads, and the fact that the winter really was very hard on the roads, the cycling of temperatures, what have you, like a lot of towns. So, we entered the spring, really, many of our roads in pretty bad shape, and the feeling was, you know, looking at the dollars in order to go ahead and, you know, comprehensively pave all the roads, impossible to do.
Right.
Within the budget, so, you know, Jim, I think you pointed out that, you know, the prudent thing to do may very well be to triage the situation, which I think, you know, the way that, you know, Bob approaches the repaving, it's not wasted money to the extent that it's followed, perhaps, by the more comprehensive repaving, that work needs to be done anyway to shore up the base, so that it can be more comprehensively paved, i.e. the entire width of the road for however many feet. So, you know, I was particularly uncomfortable with a number of roads, given the fact that I find myself and many other people dodging the potholes, crossing the yellow line, and you've addressed many of those issues already, so I think, you know, that work has been much appreciated, and I think very well done, and now it's just a question of what do we have left in terms of funding to either continue that work, you may have some of that work continuing, or I think you presented paperwork today for more comprehensive paving, just to bring perspective to the discussion that, I don't wanna speak for Kevin, but I'm sure you agree, we'd like nothing more than to comprehensively repave every road that really requires it.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, we don't have the luxury of doing that, so we're having to prioritize and make some decisions, so. So, you know, Kevin, this being your first meeting is a good opportunity for you, if you have alternative ideas and expectations, you know, we should, we should have that discussion now that you're a member of the board, but that's how we've approached it, yeah.
When we have, you know, we have road needs, and we need to, of course, fund the needs, we have just a, you know, just a handful of, of funding, and it's our maintenance budget, which really, that's all it is, it's a maintenance budget, we have what we vote for at town meeting through articles, if we have some extra money, we can identify streets, and then we have Chapter 90, and if we're lucky enough, they get a grant for like complete streets or something, that's just about all the money that we have to pick, pave roads. Chapter 90 comes with, there's some rules you need to follow, so if we go out and we do some section patching, it's, some, majority of towns are gonna call it perm patch, permanent patching, it's gonna be, if it's gonna be funded by Chapter 90, it's gonna have to be for a street that's gonna get overlaid, because they have rules that say you have to go curb-to-curb 500 feet, and so if we say it's in preparation of a top course, it, it can get funded, and that's, you know, the roads that we're looking at here for future overlay.
And what is the timeframe between when that patching is done, until when it's advised that we complete the top course?
You know, it's, it's like, you gotta keep an eye on it. So we've got a handful of streets that we've made promise to ourselves that we're gonna go and overlay, so if you wanna, wanna take a peek at Union Street, you'll see the same, same thing there. If you wanna go up and look at Noon Hill, that's in a binder condition, it's waiting to be topped, and that was before I became director, so that, you know, that's been sitting there for 10 years. But, you know, if it was falling apart, I'd be on your ear right away, so, you know, we're skating, and then as they start to look good, other streets fall apart, you know, and they fall apart for different reasons, you know, just poor drainage usually, but maybe there's a water main break, or the gas company goes down, and that comes ahead of the worst condition, it just raises its head, and it look, you know, it's something that we can't wait, but, but to answer your question, you know, three to five years, you know, and I think we're pushing it.
Well, I mean, this is a constant battle for you, Bob, and you do a great job of what you got. The only, and I know we kinda talked about this a little bit last time, Jeff, the only thing, and we talked specifically about Hanover, I remember, you're right, there are only two houses on Hanover Street. I, I tend to weigh a road a little bit more where we have, that's a cut-through, as you stated earlier. Where we have roads, and I'll go back to Merrill Lake, we have a lot of people that live on Merrill Lake, on that road, it's more than two houses. So that, that's why to me, that raises, that comes a little higher on my priority list, because I just, I, I'm more sympathetic to roads where we have a lot of people, and we discussed on River Road, one of the reasons I think we, sort of, River Road wasn't on your original list, and, you know, the gentleman made a very good point, and there are a number of homes down there, and a number of people, that's not a cut-through, it's a major area for a lot of homes. I feel that same way about Merrill Lake as opposed to Hanover. I don't know if that's a tradable item, or whether Hanover's worse, I've been down Hanover, I've been down Merrill Lake, they're both bad.
Yeah. Hanover's not on the list, it's a, it's a, it's a street that I'm paving too, but not including.
Oh, I apologize.
No, it's, it's kinda like a landmark, you know?
You're right. I apologize, it is not.
I had it on the original list.
You did have it on the original list, didn't you?
Yeah.
I thought, okay, all right, I said.
You know, I could say the same thing about Diamond Street.
Afternoon meetings lose it, I guess.
Diamond Street is in just as bad a condition as Hanover. If you live on Hanover, it's the worst street in the town, but there's five streets that you can live on that you'd say the same thing. There's a section of Grove Street that's really bad, but there needs to be a water main put underneath it.
Right.
And I'm gonna explore that this year, I've made that promise, three years in a row, it never got around to it.
I've marked it, so I know how to drive around all the little potholes now, and I miss, I miss most of them.
There's a handful of streets, yeah.
Is there a source or a reference document that we maintain that kind of lists out the priorities that Jim was talking about, where we identify the most critical streets, down to the ones that are in the best shape?
Kevin, I, you know, I do, I have a survey that I did in 2008 when I first came on board, it lists every single street, and some streets five different times, because there's five different conditions, one part might be, so they're, it's called segmentation of streets, and you rate them in worst, in order of condition, and you give it an OCI, overall condition index, and I had every single street on there, and I've updated it up until about 2012, and I just got too busy to go out and do that survey, because it needs me to go out there for two weeks with horse blinders on and do nothing else, and so, we haven't lost control of that, but in a small town, and after a few years, I know I'm like the back of my heart, and, you know.
Yeah, you're exceptionally good, Bob.
Back of my hand. You know what I'm saying, Kevin, but, great question, that's what we need to do.
Back of your heart's probably more accurate, you guys.
We need to, to do that, and, you know, right in the very front, it'll show, what we do is, we join in with 19 towns, and we go out and we bid the different types of work, catch basin cleanings, catch basin repair, you know, guardrails, concrete sidewalks, street overlay reclamation and all that, and so I do is I take those streets, and we give them an OCI, so if a street rates like a 30, just like in school, if you, everybody has a difference of an OCI, if you're a good student, you get like a 90, if you're a bad student, you get an F, you get, it's, the street's rated at a 20, and then you can translate that into emergency, poor condition, fair condition, good, and so, so on, and each one of them demands a certain type of repair method.
Mm-hmm.
And each repair method, through the bid in the 19 towns that I told you where we bid that, so I know how to put a price to it, wrap it into a spreadsheet, and you get[1775.91] that, so I know how to put a price to it, wrap it into a spreadsheet and you get your report on, on a pie chart in the front. And it'd also give you a cost, what the town would need. If, for instance, you took and you wanted all these streets to be like a 90, wouldn't be, it'd be ill-advised and it'd cost you 20 million these days because you want to stagger the streets. Because if they, you build them all together in one year, they'll all fall together, fall apart together, you know? So... You know, uh, I know you're looking at that and that's just, everybody here knows these streets. You know, what's not on that list is, um, like I said, Hune, Tuckah, um, Medway Branch, you know, streets that you may not have a lot of functionality, but Medway Branch really does, it brings you down to the DPW, but there's a lot of, uh, a lot of traffic on the Wednesdays and Saturdays going to the transfer station. And, um, some of that street was already done, why not finish it? So, it's not on that right now, we can hold it together, but, um, so there's, there's just a handful more. One of the ones I wanted to tell you about, and Jack, I don't know if I've updated you on this, but, uh, Lake Street. Lake Street, very controversial. Been accepted by the town, not yet accepted by the state until we bring it up to a standard where, um, we submit it and the state accepts it. Part of it is, but, um, we're still fighting that battle. Last time I went out there, I had the street laid out a month ago, two weeks ago, staked it all out, center line, everything, and, um, and it's still not to the satisfaction of the plaintiff. So, um, I don't know what to tell you on that, just...
No, I know, I, I did see your correspondence with our attorney.
Yeah.
The attorney, our insurance attorney, Seth was from, uh, I can't think of the firm right now. It was going back to Mr. McCormick to have that, have that debate.
What's the issue? I thought we had an agreement.
Well, we have an injunction.
Well, the issue was, the issue is the, where the layout, his, his wall is on our, on our...
Property.
Property.
Right.
Right?
Right.
That's the short story?
And if you don't use a little bit of that property, then we go into the water because the road, the layout of the road goes into the drink.
So, we're gonna have to go back to the court and have the court tell him that, I think, that, that, that we're gonna have to move the road, move, take down his wall. I mean, you know, we're not, I don't think we're gonna have to legally, well, whatever, I'll let the court decide that, whether or not we have to rebuild the wall or not. Not a, it's not a substantial wall, it's just a...
No, I know.
One foot. I mean, it's...
So...
Go ahead.
All right, so, so we don't have an agreement at the corner by the pond? In terms of the wall and doing that, but can we, and maybe this is just a not a practical statement, Bob, but is it?
Do everything else?
Yeah.
We talked about that.
Yeah. Can we do everything else?
No, I think we'd be chasing, um, bad money with good money because I really need to take down a couple of trees. I really need to plant those stumps because the pavement might go right over it.
But, but isn't that all prior to his property? I'm talking about doing it...
But he says Lake Street and that's what's on the injunction. And what is in text is what is law. I mean, if, like Seth said, had we right away kind of narrowed that down to really what was bothering him, we might have done what you're saying, go right up to the property lines and do everything else. But I don't even know if we can work on the accepted part because of the language of the injunction. So, we have 1,800 feet of paved street from Main Street down, because I'm, I'd be willing to do that like right away.
Well, and just, just to your point about if we had narrowed it down, one of the reasons why we couldn't narrow it down is there were, there was at least one, if not a couple of people on the street that weren't in the camp that anything should be done because they liked the fact that there's little traffic on the street. So, you can't just focus on Mr. McCormick, given that there was a couple of other parties. And I'm sure, speak for Mr. Lee on your record.
But it's Mr. McCormick that, that, it is exclusively Mr. McCormick that has brought forward the injunction that's prevented the work. You're never, I mean, you, God, you know how we tried to satisfy, what, 50 homeowners on that street?
Yeah.
Um, and again, no good deed goes unpunished. Um, and you know where, you're never gonna get a unanimous view on what needs to be done. But, uh, it is our road now and, um, it's a shame that one person can prevent this from being at least up and to that property line. I mean, can we at least look into that with counsel and see if, I mean, if financially it doesn't make sense to do, Bob, then, you know, don't waste anybody's time talking about it, but it's just...
Look into it.
I mean, this has been years that we've been prevented from repairing a road that is, that is a hazard to the people that live on that road.
Yeah.
And a hazard to emergency vehicles if they have to get down that road.
And there have been a lot of delays, a lot of them due to health issues with the plaintiff, but every time we go to court, ends up getting delayed months.
Well, we certainly don't wish anyone ill health.
No, no, I just, it's, it's been a frustra, I'm just saying that's added to the frustration.
Yeah.
Trying to resolve this quickly. Yeah, we certainly can look at that.
Well, things aren't necessarily fair, I guess.
No, I don't think we're, you know, this isn't our town council that's doing this, it's, uh, Pierce Davis is the firm that I couldn't remember a minute ago.
Yeah.
Um, he hasn't been the greatest, you know, he's assigned by the insurance company. Hasn't, hasn't been awesome for us, but, uh...
Well, anything to get this, this has been almost three years.
Wow.
Um, just to fix a road because a particular neighbor at the end of the road doesn't want it fixed. And he happens to be an attorney and therefore it's very easy for him to file. And he did. And we have not been able to move on this. So, okay. I feel badly for you because I know how badly you want to get at that road. Half the road is dirt.
Right.
You know, you work with this for so long that people think you're personally attached to it. I'm really not. It's business for me, I want to do the best. I know the majority wants the street done. Like I keep saying, everybody's driving a BMW these days and the potholes are this thick and it's dusty, it goes in your windows. Right now for me to work, for us to work on the street, it's more difficult because it's a jungle now. I can't see through the forest anymore because it's all grown in and it's, you know, three weeks ago, we'd be paved and done. And I think that people gave it, give it a chance, they'd love the finished product.
And there's some hazards because some of those trees are right on the road with roots exposed and, and there's a good feeling, I think you thought there were several trees that were at risk of coming down.
Yeah, and we're not looking to take those particular, you know, the beech trees, they're American bass, I did three names for them, but they're 180 years old and I don't want to take them down. So, I, I got a way, I think we can, um, we've designed a road where we think we can get by those trees and save them and everybody should be happy. It's just that we haven't met with the satisfaction yet and it's, I don't know, I, to me, it's like a stall tactic because I just don't know.
Okay.
And it's killing the lake down there, it's killing the wetland because every time I put gravel down there, washes into, you know, so everything...
This goes back to when Jeff was on the planning board, right? You walked that road twice with a can of spray paint, you know, marking trees and...
Yeah, this is almost six years old, isn't it? Well, to be continued, Tom.
Yeah. The other streets that you see there, obviously, um, you know, about two, so, want to do, Cleveland Street's been, it's in pretty bad shape. We stalled purposely for that because of the development going on down there, so, um, even though I'd like to wait longer, it's not, the street couldn't do another winter, gotta do something. So, when I, when you see that little bit of Tucker Road on there, it's only just across the street from Cleveland and it's only about 200 feet coming down the hill, it's just too tough and when it, the water comes off that hill in the winter. So, I want to get pavement there, go down Cleveland to, uh, it says right there, Holbrook. And then, uh, want to skip and jump, just like we're doing down, uh, Myrtle Street, do some section patching. And then I want to take a left and go up, uh, Fruit Street from Cleveland up to Jane and Paul's Farm. I think it's in there at 600 and something feet, I'm not sure.
That is really bad.
Yeah.
And then when we're done with that, those prices I think are fairly conservative. I'm hoping there's a balance which falls back in the chapter 90 and then we'll do a phase two because all of this work is gonna get done before July 4th.
How much do we have left from last year?
Um, I was gonna say that to you. Probably about $190,000, but we also have some projects open. When, when I met you a month ago, I, I showed you all those projects. So, we have an article two. We have two road articles open right now. One's for Lake Street and has been on the books for the five or six years we just talked about. There's another one with a balance of about $100,000 that I'm using now to do some section patching outside of this list. So, if you want to get a preview of what this is gonna look like, you can go up Bonsible, Toro and Wellfleet right now because we did them all last week. And you'll see a pretty nice, not a bad-looking street for what was really bad-looking a week ago.
Questions, guys? Kevin?
Uh, just the document that you referenced before, that kind of outlined where everything was, is that publicly available? Is that something that I could get from you?
I can email it to you if you want.
I'd appreciate that, thank you.
You'll understand that it's, it needs to be revised.
Completely understand.
Some of the streets are done, but you'll see the method in which we've done it.
Figured it'd be a good baseline to start with and then build out from there. Thank you.
You bet.
We'll get your hands full.
The one, the one you, the one you handed out last time we were together, Bob, that might be helpful to Kevin as well.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll email you the both of them.
That might be more useful to you.
I'll, I'll email you one file and the Excel has all the tabs on it, has like a whole bunch of things if you don't question me on it, um, because I forget what half of it is.
No, no, it's just from my reference, I appreciate that.
Yeah, you bet.
Thank you.
Not a problem.
The, the one that we had a month ago is more, is a more condensed version, but still far more extensive.
These here?
Okay.
That and then the, the one from prior meeting.
Which is just a worksheet.
Right.
Right, yeah.
The only other thing I would tell you guys, other than pavement management, is just what we're doing with personnel and, uh, we've got a young guy that was on water that left us, so now we're down to two guys in water. We had a transfer, we had somebody leave and so on highway, we're looking to hire, we have an advertisement out for, uh, an equipment operator. Can you believe it? There's nobody out there. I mean, that's how good work must be, that I can't find anybody after months of advertising for an equipment operator. Might get a forkless operator, but I don't need, uh, you know, warehouse worker. But we have our IM one, one young man that might come in and, uh, we'll make our decision this week and, uh, forward that to Jack for his viewing. Our office is down one help, we're looking for an office assistant, basically a water clerk. So, we're, uh, going out to advertise and, so, kind of like shorthanded at the wrong time, but, um...
Well, your, your guys do, you know, they've, they've got a job where they'll never get credit because you'll never get enough done for people to be happy, but, uh, your guys do a phenomenal job with a very, you do a phenomenal job with a very small staff. So...
Haven't known that position, yeah.
Thank you.
I was just, uh, running some numbers while Bob was talking earlier. I mean, if we, if we ever wanted to go back to the, that, the road stabilization fund that we talked about seven, eight years ago? Um, so, um, just, you know, the town had supported a $300,000 override 15 or so, 20 years ago?
15, 20 years ago.
To help fund the roads on a, on an annual basis. That money was pulled into the general fund budget at some point in the, really when we hit the crunch in 2007 or 2008. Um, and so that money is no, you know, didn't need to be, but unfortunately was no longer dedicated to the roads. Since then, uh, right around 2010, they created a process at the state level that allows municipalities to have, to create stabilization funds, um, that are for a specific, whatever the town wants it to be. In this case, we created a, uh, we created a road stabilization fund. Um, and then we tried to fund it through an override, which you can earmark.
We did a sidewalk one, too.
Yep, and we did a sidewalk one and we talked about a vehicle capital one. But, but the road one, if we, if we did a, if we did do an override for that and, and question, you know, put the question out to the people correctly so that it was earmarked for the roads...
But going stabilization, you're gonna be used to that.
Yeah, we get money that would just go into the road program if we, if we wanted to do that. If we went back to doing 300 to 400,000, it would be in the 20 cent, you know, impact on the tax rate if we, if we did that. And it would be, you know, 20 cents on a $500,000 home would be $100 per year. So, that, that goes to Mr. Craig's Ralph's point, you know, we want people, at least he would, I've got to ask the other 11,000 people in town, but, uh, what, uh, 6,000...
We went to the ballot on that twice. We had the sidewalk one, we'll say $50,000 override. We had a, uh, those guys did a terrific job. It was an 11-year plan, would have connected all the communities, all of the neighborhoods. I mean, everyone complains we don't have sidewalks, well, this fixed it. It was a master plan for the whole town, $50,000 a year and, um...
10 years we would have had road, we would have had sidewalks in every major, what year was that?
I'd say 10 years ago, eight, 10 years ago.
2008, 9, 10, somewhere in that.
Somewhere around there. And again, it, it's just the concept that people don't want anything over and above their tax base, you know, it's, it's an overhaul.
Yeah, I mean, I think we brought them forward at the same time we were asking for the Framing Kennedy School, right?
Might have been, yeah.
Competition that, you know, people only wanted to, their taxes to go up so, you know, not that you want your taxes to go up at all, but, uh, people...
I mean, the police and fire failed three times as well. And then it's just, um, persistence, I guess, is the secret to it. But, um, the problem is, is that when you keep pushing these off and off and off, the cost of getting those things done goes up and up and up.
Yeah.
And, and that's what frustrates us, is that.
I'd like to find a way...
I mean, I'll worry with the story of the school sometime about how we spent three times as much as we should have spent.
Yeah, yeah.
And I mean, three times as much.
At some point, I'd like to, you know, be able to, it'd be great if we could dedicate more money to the road program and...
Well, last year we put 200,000 free cash into it.
Yeah.
How much free cash do we have left? 400?
200, but we have a $200,000 snow and ice stuff, so that was, so really, in the big scheme of things, we don't have any free cash.
Yeah, and we won't know until probably, it's pretty quick, so maybe September, October?
Really, September, he usually has, he's gonna down...
Certified in October, so we'll know then.
But I think that'll be, you know, I'm wrong, but it won't be as big as it was last year because...
No, I know.
My budgets are getting tighter.
Okay. Anybody? Questions for Bob?
No.
So, Bob will come back with, you'll come back with chapter 90 requests and the...
So, you need us to sign these, sir?
Oh, you already got them?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're here.
You want me to wait for that or get it from Susan later or, there's only a...
No, I, it's, uh, I'm, well, first, do I have a motion to approve the chapter 90 request?
So moved.
This one is for $195,382.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
While you're going around with that, I can tell you, as you're signing, what's Jackie? Has an objection, going to, we're going to reclimate Meeting House, curb it and binder it. The developer up there, Marinis, got his last three foundations in. And I expect by the end of the summer, all the woodwork and the heavy trucking will be out of the way. And then we'll pave that in.
So hopefully it's the end of the season?
Yes. Well, at least the binder will be in.
Yeah, I know.
Well, you really much won't know the difference.
Nice to have that smooth rag going up there.
We have a second request, Chapter 90 request, as Bob outlined, for $129,671. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Another thing, am I rambling or should I keep going?
Keep going.
Another thing you may or may not be aware of, we have going out with an RFP for additional revenue on the Weber water tank. And with that, we're looking to, I talked to the, I talked to the condo association up there. They've agreed to let us use the easement to access, to build a new road to the water, the water tower from the wastewater treatment plant, which is right next to it, which we already manage, eliminating the access road, which forces us to pay out 20% revenue every year.
So moved.
They voted to approve that in their meetings.
Good. That is good news.
Yeah.
And is, I know you had the money for, I believe, didn't we get the money from Borelli on that, for that road? Upstate Offroad?
Yeah, so we're trying to do that by the end of the season, after it finishes.
Yeah, so I was saying, we're going to reclimate that.
As soon as the last condos in the back are done, we're going to finish.
Yeah, so we're holding that money for that. And I believe there's sufficient funds there to take care of it. We don't need any help anywhere else for it.
Okay, good.
The sidewalk didn't connect, right?
No, but it will. In front of the condos, I didn't want to put them in.
Do you need this attached as well?
Yeah, that goes to...
Okay, you may have to print another, because I wrote two streets down on that, so.
All right.
I'll cross them out.
Yeah, what streets are you talking about?
Oh, you know very well. Mira Lake and Lake Street.
Crazy lake.
Needham Street.
Was that on there?
I didn't, I just didn't, I ran out of time. I would have said Needham Street.
Do you want these back or do they go to the...
I want.
We'll take them, because we're going to make copies.
We're going to make copies. Thank you.
I don't envy you, Bob. It was a tough winter on Rose, one of the worst I can remember.
I don't know, it was a combination of just cold enough and moisture.
And the hot, and the cold.
Sometimes more snow's better.
All right, we're going places to go, things do, so let's keep moving on.
Let more snow, let more snow better, got them going.
Yeah, Bob is. Scott, not so much.
No.
Thanks for coming in, Bob.
Pleasure.
So as far as the certification of vote, if you want me to keep going?
Sure.
We were just asking you to, a little different than you did last time. Last time, you voted Scott, and then you made Jim and Jeff the alternates, which is workable. My attorney accountant just suggested that you will vote, that you vote that one member can sign on behalf of the board.
Which is what we've done.
Yeah, you just did it by naming names, but just, just take a vote that authorizes one member to sign.
Versus the name.
Right.
Nice change. Okay.
Just voting, you vote, who suggests you vote to authorize one member, a member, to sign on behalf of the board?
Someone like to make that motion?
I move that we authorize a member to sign on behalf of the board. Second.
I don't think we need discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Most of the time, it's me, because I'm the one that's here during the day, but there will be times.
They voted, you gotta remind me, we gotta shut that off. Kevin moved, Jeff seconded, that we, they authorized a member to sign on behalf of the board for the warrants. The second item was, we have some nominations for the registrar. For you folks to vote one member as the registrar. You have three names there from the Republican Town Committee and one member from the Democratic Town Committee. Not a showstopper, but Carol did raise a little bit of a concern over one member whose spouse is a state committee woman. Just could create some conflict, that's...
Well, they have submitted three names, and we don't need the potential of a conflict, so. That is, in case you don't know, it's this one.
Yep, I just cleared it out. Thank you.
Your pleasure, gentlemen. We all know Dave Lutz.
I think Ken Ralph's been pretty active on the, he's a Republican Town Committee, straight shooter, too.
Do we try to maintain a balance or...
There's three, you gotta at least have one. And right now, I think there's one of each, so. So yes.
I don't think there's ever been one of our beach, has there?
What's that? You can't have all, you can't have all three Republicans.
Oh, no, no, yeah, it's just one.
Gotcha.
Sorry, I misunderstood.
Nope.
Well, do I have a nomination?
Well, you know, I've, I'm familiar with Ken just from the Republican Town Committee. You know, I'm sure, you know, the other candidates are perfectly willing and able, you know, qualified, but I've had some experience with...
It's okay, pick him. Want to nominate Ken?
So moved.
This is torture.
We're getting close, yeah.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, the Democratic one ought to be pretty simple.
No, I think, oh, maybe you misunderstood. So you needed to appoint, which you did, although you could reconsider it. You needed to appoint one of those four candidates.
So that gets back to my question, if we maintain a balance between Republican or Democrat in terms of the broader spectrum of the registrars?
I think you've got two right now, one Republican, one Democrat. Jerry Santamen stepping down, who was a Republican, so we had two Republicans and one Democrat. Jerry stepped down, so then you could replace him with either a Republican or a Democrat.
I misunderstood.
So my apologies. So certainly have the opportunity to reconsider.
You want to reconsider the vote? Anyone? Hearing none. Will stand as so voted.
We have a covenant for Norway Farms. It's a two board members who are on the planning board may be able to speak more intelligently this than I can, but it's to allow us to have rights and easements to construct, inspect, repair, to do work on sewers and stormwater and et cetera. It's a pretty standard covenants for easements and utilities.
The planning board has signed it, too.
Kevin, you're, anything you need to enlighten us on, on this? It seemed pretty straightforward.
I don't believe there's anything I can enlighten you on, on this.
Okay. Jeff, you okay with it?
Looks pretty standard.
I mean, we've had these before. It's pretty standard, yeah.
No, it's fine.
Well, with my left and right being experienced planning board members, I'm more than happy to defer to their better judgment. Anyone want to make a motion?
I have a motion to approve the conveyance of easements and utilities.
So moved. Seconded.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On to more exciting business. We have the annual Hockamok area YMCA triathlon that goes through a portion of the town. Sometimes they give us a map. Didn't look like they gave us a map this year, but it's usually down on North Street.
Hold on. I think I kept the map.
Chief Stone did approve it.
Sorry about that.
She likes to save on our printing.
This is the same one they did last year, isn't it?
Yeah, they've done it a bunch of years. So it's a triangle that goes around. Around Triangle Oval.
Same as last year. Close enough to a triangle, Jeff, I guess.
Yeah, so this is just a...
Or a condensed circle.
That's the nine-mile bike course.
Jeff, you want to take? Do I have a motion to approve the YMCA request?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Please consider the garden club's request for a brief ribbon-cutting ceremony on July 23, 2018, from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. They have a, they renovated the Memorial Rose Garden on Town Hill.
The motion?
Motion, make the motion to approve the brief ribbon-cutting ceremony for June 23, 2018, from 10:00 to 11:00.
Second.
Town Hill, Jack, that's where...
Town Hill, yeah.
It's on Town Hill. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
They continue to do a lot of really nice things at Town Hill.
Yeah, they do. They work hard, very hard.
We have a request for an appointment as the associate member of the planning board. And the planning board has already, I understand that the planning board has already made this, they've already taken a vote to make this appointment. He did come in, he wasn't able to come today, but he did come in, met with me. I can tell you, he seems like a very thoughtful, experienced gentleman. If you guys haven't, did you guys have really a chance, did you interview him or...
Yep, he came in for a while and spoke to us about his experience. He's a gentleman that's lived in Fox Run Development for some time and has endured some of the difficulties from that area, so. He's been to many a meeting, I mean, as well first with the board and their processes, and is interested to learn more and to kind of have his own impact. So, he's been pretty good.
Yeah, he's great to me. He seemed really nice.
Right, we have a motion?
Yeah, he's the only one that has come forward to express interest, I think.
The only one that we received a letter of interest from, correct.
Yeah, good.
I had one individual, and he's hasn't submitted anything, so so be it.
Try again next year. I've had some good experience. I'll make the motion to appoint Gary Searle, an associate member of the planning board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I vote again?
Absolutely.
Yeah, you get to vote twice. Get two votes.
Very powerful, huh?
You got a lot of power here on this vote.
Right, so we got the same.
Aye.
You got two out of eight votes, 25%, not bad.
So that wraps up the action items.
Your five would have beat our three anyway, so it didn't matter. And just briefly, Gary, thanks very much if you're watching. Appreciate your stepping forward. We need all the help we can get, so thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Gary.
Okay. What about the warrants? Let's get those out of the way.
You can write in.
Seeing as I'm the one, I think, that's signed pretty much all of these, I move to approve warrant signed 4/24/18, 4/27/18, 5/1/18, 5/8/18, 5/11/18, 5/15/18, and 5/22/18.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I did have one other bit of, well, two other quick things. Library trustees reached out to me and said they're gonna... Serena Bloom, our director, is going to retire.
Serena's going to retire?
Yeah. It happens, keeps happening.
Wow.
That's my second director to retire.
Yeah, in the last five, six years.
Yeah, that new library just wears them out, I think. Even less than that, isn't it?
Boy, it seems like she just, wow. I mean, Robin just retired, what, maybe five years ago?
They all kind of blur together. I can't...
They do, yeah. She's terrific. That's, we'll miss her.
We have two, yeah, back-to-back great directors. So they asked me, or a member of the board, to participate in interviews. So I said, I certainly will unless one of you folks wants, it doesn't matter, you know, one of you wants to participate, that's fine. Glenn Hill is kind of coordinating that.
He's going to do it, okay. Well, this...
It's not until like September, so you can think about it.
Why don't you tell them that one of us will participate?
Well, I told, yeah, I told them that I would unless one of the three of you would, but so we will participate.
Extend their, a thank you for asking. That's thoughtful.
And then the other thing was, we, the Public Safety Building Committee voted to terminate our relationship with our project manager in Public Safety Building and...
Playing the lottery or something today over there?
It's the phone ringing upstairs.
Oh, is that what it is?
Yeah, it's because of the VoIP phone, and I just, I keep forgetting to look at the settings to shut it off on my computer.
We have a new fancy, it's very fancy. It frightens me. Every time it rings, one of them on my computer down here.
So, so we did. We terminated our project manager. I guess the good news in a way is they also, the same way we fired him, they quit, so. Luke and I were kind of kidding about it. Told them we were going to send them a lot, I said they can't quit, we're firing them, but but the good news is, I'll kind of decide, is that, you know, it probably reduces the, like, the litigation.
Pursuing any of the open invoices or anything like that?
Yeah, so.
We are gratefully accepting their resignation.
Exactly. So we did, the Public Safety Building Committee appointed Bob Bullock as the project manager. You can either appoint a firm that has, you can either appoint an engineer, a firm who has an engineer or or has, I believe it's seven years of construction experience. Or you can point an individual, and in our case, obviously, Bob has much more than seven years of construction experience, you know, before he came to the town. The committee's always been very happy with the combination of Matt and Bob, their oversight of the project, so it's the committee probably have to think about whether or not we want to, when the time comes to go to the next phase of the project, the fire station, whether or not we go out and search for a new firm or just continue with Bob. Obviously, we'll, you know, Bob's going to work with Matt to kind of manage the day-to-day, you know, just looking at who's on site and keeping track of T&amp;M expenses, time and materials expenses, so. I think the committee, and I know I am confident that between Matt and Bob, they'll be able to close out the project as best as they can.
That has been exceptional. He's been a, I'll use an expression, but it's not meant in a negative way. He's been a pit bull on this project. He has saved us considerable amount of money. He has, I would say, reined in some of the issues that we've been having and getting some things done that seem to lag. The project manager was ineffective, I guess is the best word I can think of, just totally ineffective. I mean, their role is to basically, they're the traffic cop. They're the individual that's supposed to oversee the construction of the, you know, the general contractor is doing all of the things they should do in a timely and efficient manner and minimizing any additional cost overruns that occur during that process. And I would say they have been less than adequate.
Is there any downside or exposure that we leave ourselves open to by having a town employees fill in that role?
No. No, we, we made sure that Bob met the necessary qualifications. You know, the state requires you to have oversight on these plans. Bob is qualified to play that role. Bob made it very clear that he didn't want that role unless Matt was, Matt's the one that's really on-site.
Day-to-day.
Day-to-day.
He's going to be like the clerk of the works.
Yeah, I mean, he's the one, and he brings it back to Bob. Bob doesn't, it's not draining Bob's time or efforts associated with his primary responsibility as building inspector, because Matt's there. I think if Matt was there, this would not, were not there, this would not work. Matt's what's making it work. And he's there every darn day.
Yeah, gotcha. Okay.
And if you haven't been down, you should have Matt take you down, because it's, it is coming together.
Yeah, yeah, I think once we get sheet rock up, that would be a good time.
Yeah, yeah, another week or two would be a good time to go.
Getting close.
But it's getting there.
I did send you the FY '18 goals. Unfortunately, I didn't bring them with me, but
I have.
I think we accomplished most of them.
For folks at home, they were obviously the public safety facilities was our number-one goal. They are certainly well underway. New sources of water, we've been successful with that on Holbrook. Thank you to the town voters for providing the necessary funding to complete that well. That should be online in, what, two years tops, right?
Yeah, two years should be, it should be an easy mark to make.
It should be, yeah, I agree. And that's, that's a big deal, because we now have the redundancy that we needed allow our other wells to take a rest every now and then. And these wells have proved to be very, the flow's been pretty good.
Yeah.
So it's a success, but it's a never-ending story. We've got to keep looking. We'll never, we need more. We did successfully get a housing plan into the state and have it fully certified. I think we had the best King Philip budgeting process we've had in 10 years, would be my best guess. That has always been a very difficult, I don't mean to turn my back on you, Jeff.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
It's always been a very difficult budget process. They have they're under a different timeframe than the rest of the world. They have to submit a budget to the state in February. And they always, and rightfully so, pad that budget because they don't have all their numbers. I mean, we have the same issue. We don't have state numbers when we initiate our state process either. But we don't have the breadth of issues to deal with that King Philip does. Between transportation, you know, their special ed issues, they still don't know who's coming up, who's not coming up, who might be aging out or graduating out. I mean, all of those issues don't get nailed down until closer to the end of the school calendar year. And we have had enormous gaps with KP, and the process has been very flawed. This year, they have a new finance director. We worked very closely with him. We had a lot of meetings with him. A lot of one-on-ones going through the budget, because each town has a different financial set of circumstances. going through the budget, because each town has a different financial set of circumstances. And while we try to work together, and we, for the first time, we did work together, all three towns, there were one member of each board, myself, and one member from each of the other towns, that worked all through the fall on this budget process. And it went okay, but it's hard to divest yourself of your personal needs, and they always seem to float in there, because we're not all financially in the same set of circumstances. And the budget is so convoluted in the way that formula works. Rentham has more students in the school than we do, and we're paying substantially more per student than they are because of the state formula. Last year, just to defend Rentham for a second, because they don't decide this, it's decided by the state, last year, Rentham got hit, and they had a disproportionate share of the budget, and we had a lower number. We've never been able to figure it out.
Well, yeah. Yeah, I can't say I could do the math off the top of my head, but
We take a guess. I mean, we
Based on, based on median income, you know, off of state tax returns, it's based on
Property values.
Equalized property values. So those fluctuate different than student populations fluctuate.
It's a wealth factor that goes in there that skews the formula based on what they, state perceives the town's ability to pay. I mean, that's the theory behind it. But it's hard, it's hard to figure. And every year, we put what we think is the right number. Sometimes we're close, sometimes we're not. This year, we got hit pretty heavy, a very disproportionate amount to Norfolk. But we worked it out. We came to a good agreement with them. They were the best negotiation process I've had with them in 10 years in working out the budget. So I compliment them for that. I think it's the best budget process KP's had in 10 years. What I don't know is how the other two towns are gonna vote.
Hmm.
Because we voted a fairly aggressive number. Rentham should vote their number. It's a cakewalk. I mean, it's barely writing a check. But they have been known to be different.
Mm-hmm.
They have been known to, I don't know why.
It's June.
They're both in June. I think they're the same day.
Both on the same day.
I think they're the same day.
June 5, yeah, the first Monday, I think.
And Plainville, you know, Plainville's struggling. It's a big number for them. And they've, last we heard, they'd thrown all their free cash at the budget and still had a pretty substantial deficit. So, but two out of three win.
Right.
So we'll see. But it was by far the best budget process we've had.
Excuse me.
Probably the most time-consuming. We spent a lot of time on it, but the end result was worth it.
It's always time-consuming.
Yeah, but it was a good process. And the last one, of course, is, you know, the infamous 40Bs. Just, I know people don't think we've been working on that, but we've been working on that for years, years. We've seen this coming five, six years ago. And we tried doing resiling, you've heard the story, I won't bore it anymore. But we have been working with the schools regarding potential for space needs. In fact, I spoke with superintendent about it just last week. But we don't know. We'll see. Have we hired the LSP, Jack?
Yes.
They did?
Yep.
Which firm do they hire? Sampson?
Yeah, Sampson, Weston?
Yeah.
Yeah. Weston and Sampson.
I think it was them, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's good news. Now we'll, we'll get a better handle on what the issues are over at Abbeville.
Yeah, and I know chairmen's of the ConCon Planning Board and Board of Health, Tom, met with the gentleman, Rich. They've got another meeting coming up early next week. They've got one of the neighbors who's very educated in that field involved in the process as well.
So, has been our practice, Kevin, we, you know, I know you've been gracious enough to share some of the things that you'd like to get accomplished. What I would ask, Jeff, as we always do, is just send to Jack what you would like to see as our priorities for the year. There are always more than we can, we try to keep it down to five or six that are manageable. And we can have secondary goals, but this doesn't by any means mean these are the only things we will work on, but these are things we want to make sure we do get done.
Mm-hmm.
And so we'll collectively get them into Jack. We'll bring them all together at our next meeting in June, and as a team, decide where they should be. I know you have run around communication. Thank you for sharing that in advance. I think it's a great idea. I would ask you to spend with Jack, because there are a number of issues that I think council needs to share with you regarding, especially Facebook.
Yep.
And the open meeting laws. More so, more that we have, any communication we have as a board has to be, you have to retain it.
Right.
You know, and when you don't control, we have to control the source of that.
Mm-hmm.
So working through the town webpage or something like that. But when we have an independent, like the Norfolk Community Page, we don't control that.
Right.
And so things can disappear.
Mm-hmm.
And that creates issues, legal issues for us, which is why we kind of stay off of.
Gotcha.
But by all means, you, I think you bring in expertise in that that I know I don't have. So it's most welcome. The more communication we can do and involve people, the better.
Absolutely.
Nothing wrong with that. Yeah. So, Jeff, I don't know if you have any preliminary thoughts on priorities?
Like you say, in terms of Facebook, you know, I use it rarely, but any, anything we can do to help with communication, provided we don't create other challenges for the town or town employees. You know, I think trying to be sensitive to town employees as well with regard to Facebook and
Well, we can do better. There's no question. We can do better. And, you know, I would ask you and Jack to kind of brainstorm on how we might be able to make that work. And clearly, I think that should be a priority for us.
Mm-hmm.
And I know it is for you, so that's nothing but good.
Yep.
Public safety is clearly gonna stay on there, because that's gonna be with us for another year and a half, because we haven't even started the fire station yet. And somehow, we have to frame something around our issues around growth, infrastructure considerations and things of that nature. And roads just constantly nag at me. And maybe, nobody will like us, but maybe we need to bring forward a request to see if we can get some extra funding for these roads. I think the total cost that Bob had originally was over $5 million. That if we, if we gave him all the money, you know, if we gave him all the money he needed, he needed like $5 million to fix all the roads.
Yeah, I mean, this
And that's fixed and finished.
Right. But obviously, you can't do that much more.
Can't do it. Couldn't do it anyway. Even if he had the money, he couldn't do it. We don't have, number one, the time, you know, I mean, we do have winter. Nor do we have the ability to get that much work done in a short period of time. But it's expensive, you know. It is expensive.
And along with the actual roads, you know, I know Bob has proposed some signal lighting and such, so, you know, that's expensive as well. Yeah, we do, Kevin and I were talking about it last week a little bit. We have the Complete Streets, we went out with an RFP to, we got a grant to do the Complete Streets analysis, which is gonna look at, you know, we keep talking about the intersections, but it's gonna look at all, it's gonna do a general overlook of all of our streets and identify places where there is safety concerns. Clearly, the intersections are the number one, you know, the top of the list. It's the same ones, I'm sure.
Same ones all the time.
Yeah, the same one, the one by the cemetery, the one by the Audubon, Wardman and 115, Everett and, I'm sorry, yeah.
Everett and 115.
Everett and 115. Those are the obvious ones. You know, Park and Main above, I think that will be, could be addressed by the ZBA. They'll look at that, but they'll also look at the whole, whole, our whole system. So we did award that RFP to a firm, which has the name of the firm. So they'll start doing that analysis, and they'll have, they'll have some public participation process, kind of like we did with the HPP. So people will be able to come in and review that work as we go. That's good.
And one of the other things I'd like you guys to consider that we, we've done it, but it's been less formal, is think through some of the things that we know are just projects that we're dealing with. And you and I chatted briefly about one in specific, the energy company, the energy group. You know, we've gone through all of this process of getting all these things passed. You know, we now have the building code changed, all of these things, but we still don't have that baseline. And so I asked Kevin maybe to consider that, you know, to take on that project of seeing if we can get that done. You may have some pet projects that you would like to have some ownership on, and you may have more than just that. I know I've got a couple that I'd like to continue to work on that I've been working on for a long time. And then each meeting, we can bring back, it may be nothing, it's progressed, but it may be that we can at least take some ownership around this and get these things off the table.
Good.
Sounds great.
Because government is slow, unfortunately. There's not much we can do about it. So would that be agreeable, you guys?
Absolutely.
When we get together in our, I think it's the 26th?
I think we need to talk, that was the last item. I think there was some debate about, oh.
We changed it, because someone was not available. Forgotten who, doesn't matter.
Let Jeff pull out his Bible there. Yeah, I don't think anything's changed on my end since we last
So would that be agreeable? And that's different than our goals. This would be just individual things. And Jack, I know we have to be sensitive around the agendas. If we could collectively put, once we decide on what those all are, make sure that they're all listed on the agenda, even if there's nothing to report, so that we have the ability to debate and discuss. 26th?
Yes.
Yes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is that okay with you guys?
Absolutely.
Yep.
Okay. Before we go into executive session, Jack, anything else?
I got nothing else. I just want to, the girls' lacrosse team is doing very well. They are playoff bound. Last regular season game today. Awesome.
And the hockey season's right around the corner.
Yeah, hockey season is right around the corner.
June 26.
Pardon?
It's posted June 26, the next day.
Jeff, anything?
No. My apologies that I was unable to attend the Memorial Day Parade this year. So attending a wedding up in Maine, but I'm sure you gentlemen did a great job representing the board.
It was a Mutton Jeff scene, I think, for the old comic book fans.
Yeah, we did get, I did get a couple comments that the speaker system wasn't so good, and that was
The speaker system was terrible.
That was our, that was our backup system. Apparently, the DPW put that up because they were concerned about the rain. So either we'll make sure we have the good system out there, or they said they would, we would look into some
A lot of people told me it was hard.
Better weather.
Especially the kids. They couldn't hear the kids.
So we'll try and, we will improve on that for next year.
And the good news is, is that the kids are now back in the groove. That was just, they never withdrew, so for, you know, because they didn't, they weren't there last year. That was just the teacher that had been responsible for that in the sixth grade, I think, went back to the fifth grade, and the newest sixth grade teacher didn't know anything about it. And I mean, it, these things happen.
Yeah.
And, but they are very much enthusiastic about continuing their participation, as they always have. So the kids are great.
Okay.
So, that's good news. Kevin, anything?
Nothing else for mine.
Okay. Sue, anything on your side?
Oh, good.
Sue's been doing a bang-up job.
I, we are going to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing contract negotiations with Union Personnel Clerical Union and the DPW Union. We will not be taking any votes, and we will be not adjourning back into public session. I need a roll call vote.
Kevin Calcutta?
Aye.
Jeff Fulamow?
Aye.
Jim Lehan?
Aye.
You did say in preparation, right?
I did say in prepar, if I did not, I will repeat it. In preparation for contract negotiations with Union Personnel Clerical Union and DPW Union. Thank you all very much for joining us. I hope you, we will not be back until June 26. In the meantime, I hope that everyone has a safe, don't, Community Day, June 2. Always a terrific time. And thank you to the Norfolk Lions and the Holmes family for allowing us to use their facility. Just one more comment on Field of Flags Day for those folks that did not hear or did not participate. That was a phenomenal, phenomenal gathering, not so much in number, but in results. The Norfolk Lions raised over $12,000 for the Fisher House, which was just fantastic. These folks do wonderful, wonderful work for the citizens of Norfolk. We can't thank them enough. So, thank you all. Be safe, and we'll be back on the 26th. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.